Guthrie Public School Board of Education Meeting to order, 7 o'clock. Roll call please.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Pearson. Salee.
Here.
Smedley.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Pennington.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Mr. President, your quorum, please stand with me and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation for Certified Support Employee of the Month. Mr. Robel.
For September, we have a Certified employee of the month was nominated by [unintelligible] a guest special ed teacher, and we will be presenting the plaque and the solid gift card provided by the Lions Book.
I'm nominated Sandy Norton as the support staff employee of the month. And I want to present you with this plaque. It's not nearly enough. And I want to read to you what I heard about Sandy, and I'm going to try to do my best without passing out or crying. I'm not much of a speaker in front of people. Mrs. Sandra Norton has been employee of Guthrie Public Schools for eighteen years. For the past five years, Ms. Norton has been assigned to my class as a staff professional. My students love Ms. Norton, and so do I. Ms. Norton is one of those people who always goes above and beyond. Sandy gets to work every day early and stays beyond her seven and a half hours with a lunch break which consists of fifteen to twenty minutes a day if she's lucky. Ms. Norton never complains about her job duties. She has the pleasure of recess duty every day, whether it's a hundred degrees or thirty-three degrees. She goes to P.E. and music each day as well. Ms. Norton is a safe person. The students all know to go to Ms. Norton whether they need to tattle or need a hug. And it's not just my students that run to Ms. Norton, it's all the students. She's a hard worker who is more concerned with the students in need than herself. She is soft-spoken, dependable, reliable, caring, and one of the hardest-working people at our school. I appreciate her and the job she does. She makes my classroom and gets the better of late. Mrs. Sandra Norton is most deserving of this award.
One.
Oh.
I didn't bring one.
In presenting our Certified Employee of the Month is Joe Hall.
I have two copies, one for you.
Okay.
You can take them within one big enough for me to read it. Kara Walters is a returning starter to Guest staff. She was an employee of Guthrie Public Schools early in her professional career. She's now been back at Guest as she enters her second year teaching in the Sevier and Percount class. Kara is moderates several IEP meetings and touched on topics that are normally hard to discuss with parents. She handles this with class and dignity. The parents and the students in her class respect her, which makes IEP meetings less stressful. Recently, a child was not responding in her class. Emergency vehicles were called, and Kara kept everyone in the room calm as she was trying to help the student. The student was in the hospital the rest of the day, and Kara kept in contact with the parents, with the parents, and relayed that information to me. In my eyes, she was our superhero that day. Another reason why she deserves this award is when she took such pride as one of her students was able to eat on his own. Eating is a task that many are able to do with ease. It challenges for this student. Kara was so excited for this child that she just had to show me the video of the student feeding himself for the first time. You could have given her a million dollars. Well, I don't know, maybe. Kara would have been more excited for the student. Kara Walters is deserving of this award. She has dedication, compassion, and joy for her students. Kara would never think herself to be deserving of such an award, but she is very worthy. Kara truly prays assignment to the Guest building.
Wow, thank you.
I get really proud of you. Was this the one in the paper?
Thank you.
Lord, let me get that one.
Let me get you that.
Thank you for the nominations, and thank you very much for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Good job. Comments to the board by citizens registered to speak?
We have none registered, sir.
Comments to the board by board members?
I have no comments. Mr. President, tonight, briefly, I wanted to talk about school security. It seems this issue has become front and center in recent years, and as a father of three students, a very personal one for me, I appreciate the investment in additional SROs made by this board and administration the past couple of years. However, until we are able to fully staff each building with security personnel, I'm not sure we've done enough. We recently had a proposal before this board to install biometric safes equipped with 911 notification and tools to slow and assailant. While I appreciate the dedication to improving building security, I believe this proposal was weak and inadequate given the tools at our disposal. It's embarrassing to talk about strobing lights and pepper spray as an effective deterrent in an active shooter situation when a more lethal deterrent is available. I believe if we are serious about increasing school security and preparing for the unspeakable, we as a board should utilize every tool at our disposal, including arming staff with guns. This past spring, the state legislature overwhelmingly passed House Bill 2014 and signed by the governor which allows staff to carry guns. This bill requires 120 hours of firearm instruction that includes the completion of a school resource officer academy. I'm bringing this up tonight to encourage everyone to think about it and to do some research. I intend to ask the board president to place this topic on next month's agenda for consideration and possible action to begin the process of developing a program to enhance school security by utilizing armed staff. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else? Thank you, Travis. Superintendent's report. Several items that are fun to report. First of all, congratulations to our high school softball team. They qualified for the state tournament and play prior at 1:30 on Thursday at ASA Hall of Fame Stadium, and that's their first appearance since, I believe, 1997 or 1998. I guess the first report of that was inaccurate, so we corrected that. Congratulations to Riley Prather, senior Guthrie High School, who had the grand, had the champion brochure guilt at the Tulsa State Fair this weekend. And I did a little research on that myself. I had to because I'm not an ag person, but that's a big deal. And so I wanted to kind of get that across to everybody. And congratulations to Riley. He, you know, I've gotten to know a lot of our ag students, and he is as dedicated at that as anyone I've encountered, and so with his dedication comes the fruits of his labor. We just completed a wildly successful, stressed wildly, successful homecoming week, right, Mr. Legrand? And I think the alumni gathering on Friday morning was the largest I've seen in my four years here in Guthrie. Very, very pleased to see the alums. One of the things that I enjoy the most about homecoming, and I shared with the alums when I gave them the closing address, my two favorite days as superintendent are homecoming and graduation. I think those are the things that really remind us why we do this stuff. And I'm always amazed, no matter what class it is, there's always somebody that I encounter that I've known for years that I didn't know was a Guthrie graduate, and I went through that again this weekend, and so that was a fun time for me as well. Some other good news, the roof work has begun at Guest, and that's the first site to receive a new roof. The contractor expecting to go to Central next, but we're actually going to do that over fall break and get as much of that done during fall break as we can because of the tightness of that job site with the landlocked part of that school. And it'll be safer for our students. And then they won't be finished at Guest, they'll go back to Guest to finish all of that before they start trying to tackle Fogarty. And the foundation's been poured on the Ag Barn project, and the framework of the building should be starting as early as tomorrow. Another good item to share with you, we are past the discussion phase of increasing our partnership with Meridian Technology Center. And that, what we're looking at including is utilization of some high school classrooms in the evening for computer classes, and allowing Meridian to do that in exchange for new computers paid for by Meridian for those labs that our students can use during the day. It's a win-win for both school districts, and we're carving out the final details of all of that as we speak and hopefully be able to begin that by the start of the second semester. And next reminder is that fall break this year is on this Friday and Monday, and just a reminder that because it is fall break, we'll play the football game at Western Heights on Thursday evening this week at 7 o'clock. That's my report. Thank you. Next, we have some gentlemen here from Transpar Group. They're going to do a presentation to the board. I'm going to introduce everybody that's with you.
I will. Thank you, President. President Pennington and Dr. Simpson, members of the board. I'd like to introduce, well, you know, Steve Cordell, the Director of Transportation. Behind him, behind me is Kyle Martin. He's President and owner, one of the owners of Transpar. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to present and speak to the board. I thought we could spend a few minutes and kind of go over where transportation is, where it's going, and try to answer some of your questions if we can.
And you got, board members, you all have copies of the presentation so that you can make notes if you need to.
So, a couple of things we want to talk about this evening are Transpar's deliverables, what you're expecting from us, some accomplishments, cost control, fleet services, principal survey, and retention, and then look at then, what we say then and now, kind of where we're at today, where we were a year ago, if you will, and then looking forward, some of the projects and goals that we've got set for the coming year. So, first thing, Transpar's deliverables. First, of course, we have a director, and with that director comes corporate support. We have a number of folks that support Steve, either in the routing process or in fleet operations, whatever area that the district may need support in or whatever Steve needs support in, that's what we're here for to do. Myself, I'm Vice President of Operations, so I oversee all of the operating locations in the country, which sounds like really big, but it's nine to twelve locations. Most of our locations are here in Oklahoma, Moore, Oklahoma, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and Guthrie, Oklahoma. Of course, service vehicle is part of that makeup. Route yield. Route yield is an efficiency study or a timing capacity study. A real efficient transportation system really begins with filling that bus up in the amount of time that you have. And so one of the things that we do and will do is a route yield study where we're testing and looking at timing capacity. And so that we do every fall. We'll be doing, in fact, Steve has already done it and mailed it in, so we'll be generating that information and recourse to present to Dr. Simpson and members of the administration at where we're at. Of course, the challenge here with Guthrie is you've got kind of the outside, you've got the kids out in the county, away from Guthrie, and then you've got the folks that live in town. And so you kind of have that combination of bringing kids in, picking kids up, dropping kids off, and so on and so forth. Anyway, so that's the route yield. The other thing that we do every year is a principal survey because it's important. Cost is obviously extremely important, extremely important in Guthrie and a number of districts in Oklahoma. But in addition to that is service, right? And I think that's one of the reasons that we were asked to come in was to see what we can do and help with terms of service, i.e. driver shortage. And so one of the things that we kind of test our success and where we're going is the principal survey. We want to make sure those folks are happy, right? If they're not happy, then we're doing something wrong. And so we look at that. That's a critical measurements, measuring stick for us. The other one is monthly reports where, in this case, Steve and Dennis get together every two weeks, but in addition to that, a monthly report that kind of recaps the KPIs or key performance indicators, driver attendance, accidents, driver shift, those kinds of things. Routing software support, license, maintenance, and training. So we help, we take care of the licensing for your TransFinder routing software, and we take care of the maintenance for that for you, and then we also can help provide training because there's a number of folks on our staff that you'll see a little bit later that have experience with TransFinder routing software. TransFinder routing software is one of many routing softwares out there. There's VersaTrans, TransFinder, Angelog. TransFinder just happens to be the product that you folks use here in Guthrie. And then, of course, professional development. We look at, we want to build our management team, our local management team. So Steve has attended the NAPT conferences past year, and I think it was in Kansas City. He's attended managers' conferences, but he's also attended TransFinder conference, and will attend the next one, which is in the spring. They're always in the spring. Steve went to the last spring's conference. And then, of course, TransFinder training. We have three folks with experience that have been in town a couple of different times providing support to the team here on site as well as being able to do some routing backup and routing support. Okay, talk about corporate support. You'll see a list of names and their visit dates here in the operation. You'll see John Tucker, make sure I don't mess this up here, and you'll see John Tucker's having the vast majority. Well, John, if you met John or not, John is one of our consultants. He was here in the very beginning. He was actually here before the contract started back in May and June. And so he was the guy on the ground for a number of those weeks through the startup, and then when Steve came on board, worked with that transition with Steve. And so that's why you see so many dates. John's background is professional development and recruiting, so we also tapped him to help lead the recruiting efforts here. Myself, Dean Malito is another one of our consultants. Dean's background, excuse me, besides recruiting, is also professional development, driver training, student management training. He was here earlier in the year and done a presentation to the drivers, and is, I think, will come back a couple of times throughout the course of the year. Spent time with the drivers. Spent time, probably, I know he's met with Pat and Steve about student discipline and things that we can do to help that cause as well. Let's talk about John Tucker, Jim. Jeff Byer, Don Bergeron, and Mike Archer are all of the TransFinder folks on our team that are expert in that routing software. They've all been here. Jeff Byer is probably our lead person. He has a conference call with the team here every week in addition to making routine visits down here. So he, and then besides that, he's also doing routing, routing support and backup. Tom Platt is another consultant with our team. He's actually part of an organization called SBC, School Bus Consulting. Transpar has the consulting wing and the operations wing. So my part is the operations wing. SBC or School Bus Consulting is the consultants. And so they're the folks that work with our existing operation location, but also work with school districts around the country. So we've asked Tom and the SBC crew to help look at the future, where we want to, where we want to maybe take transportation in terms of a district, what options are out there, help control costs, routing, whether it be fleet maintenance, whether it be routing, whether it be, you know, bell times, you know? So that's Tom's. So in all, there's been about seventy-five site days here, equated to about eight hundred hours between site hours and then backup support. Talk about Tom Platt and his role. School Bus Consulting presented, I guess it was probably back in May or June, Tom came down, sat down with the administration, and we talked about options, what we were seeing in terms of the routing, where we were at, and then some of the options about maybe cutting costs. And we looked at, you know, we looked at things like shuttles, we looked at things like bell time adjustments. Of course, we have new school coming on, you know, in a couple of years, so that's going to change the makeup as well. And so Tom's role has developed some options, at least to discuss, and see if those are things that, you know, the school district administration, the board is interested in. Okay, so accomplishments. First thing, the first two things, purchase buses and competitive weight packages, critical, critical, and those were all decisions by the administration, by you folks here on the board to tackle what was a huge problem, right? Was the driver shortage and the fleet, fleet maintenance and the fleet reliability. And so Guthrie Public Schools, the board, the administration stepped up, made a commitment to the community, made a commitment to transportation to see if we couldn't soften that, and you did. And you made, you certainly made a dent and enabled the folks like John Tucker and those guys to go out and aggressively look for folks. So hats off to Guthrie Public Schools for doing that. Aggressive recruiting and a retention campaign. John, Pat Hughes, together, worked hard and diligently, went out, went to Walmarts and different places and looked at just thinking out of the box about recruiting because while we had that package, while you had that package that was out there, it had to be sold, and you had to get folks to come in. And you think about it, you guys were forty-seven, you see another slide, but you were forty-seven percent short, half your workforce. You were short half your workforce. So that's a tremendous amount, that's a tremendous hill to overcome. And they worked hard, they worked diligently to get that done, and they did, getting that done by the first day of school, which is not an easy task considering it takes at least forty hours to train the driver. And a lot of those drivers came on, did not have CDNs, so you had that extra time. And what's, for me, what's been amazing for the organization here, and it speaks a lot, I think, to the community, to the commitment by the board and the district, is a hundred percent retention. That never happens. I can't think of a location where a hundred percent of bus drivers come back because over the course of the summer, they thought, what have I got myself into, right? Or other things have happened. A hundred percent of the folks came back. That's phenomenal. That's absolutely phenomenal. Okay, student management training. Dean Malito, Pat Hughes, again, working on student management, student behavior improvements. I know over the course of the summer and the start of this year, there's been some transition between handling student behavior and some of the discipline between Pat and Steve. Routing support. I mentioned earlier about Don and Jeff and Mike being routing support, and then, of course, our manager attending the various conferences. And we were able to, which I think speaks to cost control, we were able to not add a bus this past year because we were able to move some kids around and move, now, and move them onto other buses, which freed up a bus that could take that resource and that asset and move it over to where you needed to be. Now, we've got challenges with Pepper Ranch, right, and what we're going to do with that still, and we're looking at it. But I think there were, you know, those are the kinds of things that you can help control costs. And then the other slide that you've got is kind of just a breakdown over the last three years of kind of cost for transportation from 2012 to 2014 and '15, kind of sees where your cost is. Of course, it fluctuates some degree under maintenance and fuel cost because your fuel cost drives a little bit of that cost, obviously. And then operating costs, bus purchases come in there. You know, bus purchases are made out of your general funds and available funds and not through bond purchases, so you see a number of those dollars are spent there. Fleet services. I want to talk a little bit about fleet services. One of the things that we always look at, we look at school districts and fleet size is that you have the right number of buses, they're equipped right, they're maintained properly, that kind of thing. One of the things that we found here is you've got fifty-four buses for twenty-nine routes. So you've got a lot of buses. Now, the vast majority of those buses are not operable, but that's revenue. That's revenue sitting in the parking lot, especially from the very least, if we can get them to a scrapyard, a school bus, an average-sized school bus can bring anywhere from eight hundred to, when metals are really high, I've seen it go as two thousand, but most of the time it's eight hundred to twelve, fourteen hundred dollars a school bus that can be, that can be done. If it's a working bus and you folks work, look to the online auction houses and online auctions and purchases from there. But I think there's an opportunity here if we can begin to look at closing that number down, put some more dollars back in the general fund. It's always nice things, right? Of course, so we talk about reducing the bus size, dispose of the excess fleet, the benefits of that. Obviously, we reduce insurance costs because if we can keep buses off the street and out of service, then we don't need to be paying insurance on them. I mean, you're not, but that's something to be thinking about. And then sales surplus because, again, that's revenue that goes straight to, straight to the bottom. And also, when we have a rotation plan or a fleet replacement plan, it's kind of tough when you don't have bond money, so your fleet rotation plan is sometimes subject to funds available. But certainly, if you can keep that rotation, keep a fleet rotation plan, keep that bus new, the rolling here, if you will. I always say that bus driver, they're the first person that the child sees in the morning representing the district, and they're the last person they see at the end of the day when they go home representing the district. Same way on the bus, right? That's the first picture they see, not to mention you can get anybody. Principal survey. Every spring, we send a survey out to all of our principals, asking them several questions about service, reliability, student management, responsiveness from drivers, responsiveness from the staff, long-term service, a number of questions that we ask. And so first thing, not very often do we get a hundred percent. It's always nice to make that plug when you get a hundred percent participation. We did. But of all the questions, you see ninety-two percent of the folks are very satisfied and satisfied with their transportation system. Now, what does that mean? We've got eight percent of, we've got eight percent of that we need to work on, right? So, and we do need to work on. I think part of that is student discipline, part of that is community, parent and communication process, those things that we're working on. I said it earlier, because for me, this is phenomenal. Whether it's twenty-two buses or two-hundred-and-twenty-two buses, the fact that you've got a hundred percent of the driver force that came back is phenomenal. It absolutely is. Something to be very proud of. Okay. Kind of then and now. Then being, if we could say, pre-Transpar, a year or so ago. Where were we? Wage and benefits, like I just said, we were, you were, you folks were non-competitive. You are now very competitive thanks to, thanks to the efforts of your board and your administration to make that leap, that leap of faith, if you will. And it's paid off, it's paid dividends. Recruitment, it's been very aggressive. I think it's been very successful. Think about your own places of employment and other organizations where you were forty-seven percent short of your workforce. You were forty-seven percent short here, and you were by the first day of school. By the first day of school, we were one driver down, is that right? I think we were one driver down from our committed of a hundred percent workforce. And that driver- And that driver was in training, and we just didn't make the first day. So routes are full, they're full today, is that correct? They're full today. Driver retention, here it is again, 100%. Your fleet age. With the fleet purchases that you've made, you've gained a year. You've actually kind of gained two years. Because while the overall average has gained a year, we've also aged a year or a year older, right? So you've really kind of gained two years there with that. And for an average age, we, the industry would like to, you know, like to see, that's not right, but the industry is kind of like that five, that five to seven mark. So you're getting close, not quite there. You guys probably see and feel that from time to time, don't you? Routing, we've gone mostly, we're not all there yet, but we're certainly moving forward in the electronic world, thanks to folks like Dean and the team working together. You know, employee morale is kind of objective, it's one of those objective things, but at least from what we see and hear and what I hear from Steve and when I come to town and visit, and when John's in town, certainly believe that morale as a whole has improved. Is 100% of the folks happy 100% of the time? Probably not, but we certainly are moving in the right direction, I think. I do believe that. Operation support. Again, you've seen that list, you've seen all those dates, and those are the dates that were here and will continue to be here. Prepared for the future, I think you were in those reactive modes, when half your workforce is, is short. You're getting overtime, you're doubling up routes, kids are getting home late, buses are circling back around, you know, 5 o'clock or whatever to pick kids up to take them home. And that's painful. Painful on the community, painful on you as a district and certainly as the board. I'm sure, I'm sure you folks heard it from your parents. I think we're now, we're in that planning stage, and we've got some thoughts and some ideas that might, you know, help us in terms of the financial piece and the operation and the efficiency piece. And, you know, we'll be talking about that further with the administration in the coming weeks, I guess. Looking forward. New school planning. That's going to have a tremendous impact on transportation, good or bad. It can have good impact if we, if we're able to work with transportation and, I've said this before, jokingly, but, you know, if transportation ruled the world, we would set bell times. Because then we could offer that tiering, if you will, and pairing. But if there's an opportunity to look at the new school and you get to that point and you look at the hours and the sta, and not staffing, but we look at the number of kids enrolled and those kinds of things, taking transportation into consideration, at least setting bell times, can be dollars, huge dollars, one way or the other. Because if they're, if they are, for instance, simple math, is if the bell time is the same as your bell time in town, I can't have two buses, I can't have one bus at two places, I guess is what I'm saying. But we've got different bell times where we can do things like pairing, where we might be able to take a small group of the kids in that area, take them to that school, drop them, and then come back, pick the other kids up, bring them into town, guess what? You saved a bus. 50, 60, 70,000 dollars. That's a teacher. So things to think about as you, as you get down that path, to get down that, that attendance bound. Right. The other piece that we can bring to the table and do bring to the table is our ability to do attendance boundary planning. And that's just part of what we do, that's part of the package that you have with us. When it gets to that point, and we start looking at drawing those lines, we can be there and help. We know we want to, we want to improve opening day a little bit more. I think, you know, there's some things that we could do different next year, at least as it gets to not losing kids, although if we've ever lost a kid.
Misplaced them.
Misplaced them, that's probably the right.
They were touring.
Or sleepy.
So, you know, there's some things that we can do next year to get us a little better than, than maybe where we were this year or maybe where we were last year. So we're looking forward to that. I think that we can look at improving communications with the schools and the parents, and I think it starts with our ability to meet with principals on a regular basis, meet with the administration here, make sure we're working through the problems, and that's the other piece, right? In all honesty, for us to come and sit and visit with administrators, principals and stuff like that and work through the problems, we've got to be able to work through the problems, right? We've got to be able to execute. So routing strategies, talked a little bit about that, about things that we can do in terms of the current structure. Whether it's things like shuttles, or whether it's bell times, or whether it's just the way we come into town and kind of drop kids off, pick kids up. We're going to send Steve to the second year of the Transfinder conference. We also are getting to the point that we need to update the routing software, I think is, do you want to know how many years it's a few years, two, three years old? I'm not sure. But it's about the mapping, the map, especially with the new subdivisions coming in, you know, those streets are not on that digital map.
It's at least in the fourth year.
Yeah. And so any subdivision, you know, the city's not changed, but subdivisions, Pepper's Ranch, all those kinds of things are not on that map. And that kind of plays into, especially when you have to manually draw that in, it's a little hairy to do stuff. And open access to the routing software. We are, we want to get the routing software strong enough and stable enough that it can be opened up to administrators, schools, and then there's a piece of it that can actually, if the board decides or elects to, there's a piece of that that can be opened up to the public. Where a parent could go in and put their address in, and it'll give them transportation information. We need to get the system solid enough and strong enough. We're not quite there yet, we made a lot of, a lot of progress, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. Student management training, again, Dean, working with Pat and Steve, I know Steve has, through some of the transition this year, has taken on more and more of that responsibility, but we want Dean to come back. His Dean's background is that. He was a director many, many years and was very strong in student discipline and management. So we'll have Dean continuing to come down to that. Systemized trip processes is more of an internal thing than an external thing, just making sure that the trips are being aligned and handed out and given in a fair manner, all things like overtime or in control, all of those kind of cost variances. So that's, that's what we mean by that. And I think we also need to document and develop transportation guidelines, in general. Just, you know, just operating guidelines, routing guidelines, right? You know, simple things like ride, ride times, you know, and distances to a stop, things like that. We talked about rightsizing the fleet. The other thing we want to, we want to do is develop and are developing fleet services guidelines. So we want to make sure that the fleet you've got, and as you update your fleet, we want to make sure that we're performing the services when they're required and we're doing all the things to the vehicle that keeps that life going. So that you can keep, you can get the gears out of that bus. And so we want, that's part of the other process that we're in the middle of right now. We want to improve driver attendance. That's important. While we've got all the drivers and we've got 100% of the routes full, on any given day, 90% of them show up. They got benefits, so they do, but we, what we want to try to do is, is figure out a way that we can improve those numbers and/or, and/or staff reporting. And continue to drive, the team work with the department. So there you have it. Thank you.
Co-members have questions?
I'm impressed with 100% retention. That's good.
Absolutely. We've shared that with a number of our places that we work with.
I got a question on the Transfinder. I was under the impression that's included with our contract.
The, yeah, the maintenance, the upkeep, the training of it, but it's not a Transpar product. That's, that's a different company. But what we're doing is providing, Transfinder, you know, it comes with a cost. If folks here needed help, it came with a cost. You pick the phone up. Over to Dean. And it came with a cost, right? That's, that's part of our, our focus there, that experience. That's, that's what we did.
Transpar pays the licensing.
Yeah, what we did pay the licensing.
That we weren't paying.
What's the cost of that a year? $100, I believe?
Yeah, I said it's 9, 300 and 600.
Yeah, a little under 100 grand.
Can I say something about that? With Jeff coming along and being able to go through Jeff, instead of dealing with Transfinder themselves, it is, the headaches have decreased a lot. We communicate a lot better. He's able to pick up the phone, he knows who to talk to quickly and get answers that we, we weren't getting.
You know, one of the values that we can bring to the table is we work with a number of routing software companies, with Transfinder being one of them. So we kind of have that backdoor approach that, because of probably three or four of our locations that we work with, districts that we've worked with, have Transfinder.
Prior to my arrival, I believe we were using Edge Log and it was requested in the interim when I took over to switch to Transfinder by previous route director. I'm not sure that we were using it to its fullest state quality, trying to learn it.
But it needs to be updated, the software?
Well, update, you know, like the map, the routing map and things like that, those are some of the things we're going to do this year.
Is that the cost you'll absorb or do we pay that?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, he says digital proof, and I don't know. Agenda item number nine, consent agenda. All the following items, and those items, as the routine nature normally approved at the board meetings, will be approved in one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any of all the items the consent agenda consists of, a discussion, consideration, and action of the following items.
I'm sure that we approve the consent agenda.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six, I, zero, eight.
Business agenda, item number 10. Discussion of possible actions regarding the 2015, 2016 budget.
This is on page one, pages 138 through 170 of the board packet, Mr. Schultz. It's all yours, so to speak. John, you guys, you guys are, you guys need to get on the road or whatever. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. For those of you that are, were with the finance committee and listened to all this once already, I apologize in advance. I'd like to start on page 142 of the packet, which is page two of the budget, and this is a timetable. And it's in the budget every year, but I think it's really important just to note one thing if nothing else. In June of each year, we are required by law to make the determination of whether or not we're going to renew the employment contracts of all our certified and supported employees. At that point in time, we don't know what our state aid's going to be, we don't know what our annual revenues or our property value regulations are going to be. So all of that goes to say that at the point in time that we begin this year, we have to be very conservative in how we plan to spend our dollars, because we really don't have a solid idea of what our revenues are going to be. And personnel costs are just under 85% of our total general fund budget. So that's a substantial commitment before we really have good numbers to work with. The second page of the budget that I kind of wanted to look at, just kind of to highlight the high or low points, is on page 144 and 145. And this is actually a condensed budget for the upcoming year for all funds. And 144, the budget is outlined by the function classification dimension. And function could be described as classifying expenditures according to the activity that those expenditures are going to support, whether it's instruction, student support in the way counselors, library, building maintenance. We classify them under those categories, so you can see this is what these dollars are supporting. The next schedule is classified by the object dimension, and it's more of a description of what we're actually buying. We're buying personnel services, we're buying utilities, we're buying fuel, we're paying for insurance. So those are two just real condensed schedules that, just for the general public, I think is a good way for them to get a little bit of a handle on what we, what we do. And this budget will be on our website, as it is each year, once it's approved. Page 147, and this is probably one of the most important points to be made about this year's budget. In the fourth paragraph, down towards the last half of the paragraph, it talks about the fact that our initial state aid allocation is $850,000 less than what we actually collected last year. This is due to the increase in our chargeable based upon the gross production taxes we received last year. Each year, our state aid is reduced by those items that are considered to be chargeable to equalize funding for student across the state, and that's one of those items. So in the prior year, our gross production collections went up $850,000, which increased the chargeable in our state aid allocation for this year. The problem with that is, I have no idea or no indication that we're going to collect that much gross production tax this year. So we have budgeted an additional $400,000 loss in gross production tax for this year. So those two items alone are the things that are really going to detrimentally affect our budget to the tune of about 1.2 million dollars. The $400,000 loss in gross production tax is my estimate at this time. The first two months of the fiscal year, we actually collected a little more than we did last year, but in September then it started dropping. And I think to budget a million dollars in gross production collections as opposed to the 1.4 million that we collected last year is probably not that unrealistic. But we will track that month to month and make adjustments accordingly.
Well, if there's anything, I didn't wear camp resistance, if there's anything, these are huge variables. I mean, very, very challenging. And if there's anything that Dennis and I have gnashed our teeth over, over the last month in the creation of this budget, it's the gross production estimate. But the thing that we go back to is, this is why you have a sizable carryover in a situation like this. And we knew that our gross production was elevated last year, we knew it would be chargeable. And remember, this is something that we talked about a while back on this, that it would be a smoothing process over two years. With the challenge that lies ahead is when we knew that that was up higher, we didn't know that the oil was going to bottom out where it has. And so this is a huge variable that we have to really watch very closely, and we have been every month. And we spend a lot of time talking about it, so I'm sorry.
I think the next schedules would be on page 155 and 156. As you see on page 155, under state sources of revenue, about halfway down the page in the far right column, the first six columns are the prior two years, budgeted actual collections, and then the difference. And then the final column is the projected revenue for the year that we're in. And then the final column is the projected revenue for the year that we're in. And under state sources, you can see that we actually collected $1,435,000 in gross production tax, and we're budgeting a million for this year. And then on the foundation salary aid, which is our basic state aid, we collected in excess of $9 million, and we're, this is not my projection, this is the actual allocation for the State Department of just under $1.2 million. So those are the two things that I talked about. I do want to say, and I tell the board this every year, I'm not going to budget any revenue at anything more than I can know that we're going to collect. So this is probably more pessimistic than what will really actually happen. And there's nothing unrealistic, but it's, I'm not going to take risks and overestimate revenues either. If I can't justify it, then I'm not going to estimate that amount. And the bottom line on page 156 then is we go from a fund balance of almost 2.8 million down to one that's a little less than 1.8 million if all of this comes to pass as is predicted. I think that's the most pessimistic projection that we will have. Last year, I think we exceeded our estimated fund balance that I had at this point in time by five or 600,000. So this could wind up being better, but I'm still not comfortable with a million dollars being all the loss that we would have in gross production tax. So I'd just rather be safe than sorry. And that equates, Dr. Simpson talked about having a fund balance, that equates to reducing our fund balance from right at 12.5% down to about 8.3% if that should come to pass.
We got a question on the gross.
You said 8.3?
Yeah. I think I know the answer to this question, but, so we have a charge, we'll have a chargeable this year for our foundation aid.
Right, for the gross production.
Right. So obviously, there's no, that gap's not filled in since, by the upcoming year.
Gross production seats.
Yeah, there's no offset. Since gross production is down, that hole's not going to be filled.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's where, we didn't expect it to be fully filled, because it was, it was off the charts last year. And, you know, those of us that have been around the state for a few oil cycles busting in, we know that what goes up will come down, but the depths to which it will come down, there's no way to predict that. We, and that's why we did, we made the personnel cuts that we made going into this year that were very targeted and the most, the decisions that were made were challenging, but not near what they could be if gross production continues down. And I think the key thing going through here is we knew our carryover was going to be eaten into. That was part of this two-year smoothing on the gross production. The challenge is what lies ahead past this budget and what lies ahead during this fiscal year, because I am very cautious of a proration of state aid in the later months of the fiscal year, because the way that works is if they project us to end the fiscal year, the state to end the fiscal year at 5% below the estimated disbursements, if that projection is below 5%, they will begin prorating our state aid this fiscal year. That happened in 2008, '09, which one, I can't remember when it was last.
2008, 2003.
Yeah, in those crash years. So that would have another impact on this, on this carryover that he projects right there as well for this fiscal year. Then the tough one is the billion dollar, 1.2 billion dollar, whatever, do you want to hear of what the projections are for the state budget for next year? And so those are very challenging times ahead, but the, as Dennis pointed out, as he always does every year, our calendar is so challenging based on when we have to rehire teachers as well. And so we are going to be very cautious, careful, and frugal as we go through this school year, as we look towards staffing for next year.
And just because I don't want to give all bad news, there is the possibility that oil prices will begin to rebound at least next year, and what worked against us this year could work for us next year and soften the blow of that shortfall. In other words, next year, our chargeable for gross production tax will be less if prices begin to rebound and we collect more, we're only going to be charged for the year before, so that could help soften the blow next year a little bit. So it's a stretch, and I'm looking for a little bit of life in the tunnel, but it could help us a little bit in that regard.
We, you know, one of the things, if there's any solace in any of this, is we're not going to be the only ones. This is a, this is a challenge statewide. That's why I sent you the article that I did over the weekend that was in the Oklahoman about, about what all school districts are facing. But the thing that I found most interesting, Edmund's budget, 95.2% of their budget is in salaries. Now, you can do that when you have, when a lot of your expenditures for operating costs are out of your bond fund. But when those things hit a school district like Edmund, they have less wiggle room when it comes to that, and it comes to staffing, because if you have fixed costs that are paid out of your general budget, out of your general fund, and 95.2% of your staffing, there is no wiggle room.
It is.
And Norman was at 92%. So I found that interesting, but both of those school districts have a high, a lot of their operational costs and general maintenance costs are tied up in bonds.
So it's paramount that we, that trust that we earned with that bond issue recently, that we keep it with the public? So we continue to get every bid we can get and try to save money every chance we, every chance we can, because we're going to have to go to the public again in the future, and we need that trust. So get as many bids and save as much money as you can. You might be saving the job of the person sitting next to you, is what I'm worried about.
Exactly. The next page, I think, that we'll give some attention to is page 158, and I know I print this, or present this page every year also. It's kind of a summary of costs last year and what's projected for this year, the way the cost, based on fixed costs, which are our annual salary agreements, utilities, insurance, the revaluation cost for the county visual inspection, mandated expenditures for receiving state and federal grants, that we're giving no leeway as how we spend those things. When you look at everything that is kind of fixed and we have no discretion over, that's almost 94% of our budget, 93.92%. So that leaves us just over 6% of our budget that we really have a lot in local say over once we set salaries and rehire everybody. So while we've got a little bit more discretionary money than those that put 95% of their general fund into salary schedule, it's not a lot. So a severe, severe revenue shortfall, almost always, if it's real severe, it's hard for that not to affect your performance, because that's where the bulk of your money is spent. Page 160, this is, this is the schedule that is kind of the detail of those first two schedules that I said were presenting our budget by function and object dimensions that were pretty condensed. This is in more detail how we actually budget our money. These are the cost series that we actually allocate dollars to. So I think this gives you a better picture of what we're looking at when we sit down and try to allocate the total estimated revenues we have to how we want to spend our money. This changes throughout the course of the year a little bit, but not a whole lot, because such a small portion of it is discretionary. And then the final few pages of the budget, on pages 162 to 170, are condensed reports of the prior year that can be compared to those two budget schedules that were in the front of your packet by function and object, just for anyone wanting a comparison of last year to this year. All I got.
I just want to say, great job. I love your pie charts. I like you putting everything out, spelling it out for us. I don't like to have to look for things and wonder what's in that space in between, and you spell it all out for us, and I like that transparency.
Just wish the pie was larger.
Yeah, of course, don't we always?
Thanks.
Motion?
I move we approve the 2015-2016 school budget.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Proposed executive session for the purposes of discussing employment personnel, FMLA requests, resignation separation from employment and transfer position request, it's all set out in personnel reports and discussion of extra duty assignments for 2015 and '16, disposal of which information would violate confidentiality requirements set out in state or federal law on pursuant to 25 of closed state statutes, 307B, 1 and 7. Vote to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Welcome back. On the items in agenda, item 11, we're discussing executive session. No votes were taken. This should constitute the executive session minutes. Vote on action set out in personnel reports.
I move we approve the action set out on the personnel reports.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Action upon recommendation of extra duty assignments listed for 2015-16.
I make a motion we approve the extra duty assignments as listed on our iPads for 2015-16, page 172. Second.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.
Recommendation consideration active to accept any resignations offered since posting of your agenda.
We have none, Mr. President.
Item 15, discussion of possible action, new business known or should have been known or not known, reasonably foreseen at the time of posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Item number 16, Mr. Salie.
Motion, Mr. President. Second.
Roll call, please.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I, zero N's.